The first item on our agenda is approval of the agenda. I'll move it. Second by Nelson, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed saying aye. Passes four to zero. Items two through six constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Item is passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item two is approval of the minutes of the May 7th meeting. Item three is approval of the claims. Item four from the county auditor includes A. Approval of liquor license application for Oscar Carl Vineyard, Sioux City, and B. Approval of liquor license application for Scarecrow Farm, Lawton. And five from human resources includes A. Approval of memorandum of personnel transactions. Want to draw attention to the hiring of Andrew Byer, Emergency Services Director. Appreciate the Sioux Sioux Journal already having a article out from the press release today. And item B. Authorization to initiate the hiring process. Item six from Board Administration includes A. Approval of resolution thanking and commending Drew Balken Stett for his years of service with Woodbury County. B. Approval of resolution for a tax suspension for initials TEU. And C. Approval of lifting set tax suspensions for petitions who failed to recertify their income or income does not qualify for the continued tax suspension. So I'll move the consent agenda. Second by Nelson. Hearing no discussion. Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed saying aye. Passes five to zero. Item seven from Secondary Roads, County Engineer Mark Nero. Begins with item A. Approval of resolution setting interest rates for drainage district warrants for districts under the jurisdiction of the Woodbury County Board of Supervisors.
Good afternoon. The board has typically set this at 5%. That's what we filled out the resolution for again this year. I believe state code will allow you to go to 6, but again, we're recommending 5. That's where we've been. That covers any drainage district warrants that are unpaid. That would be the investment that the, those who received the warrant get on it, so.
Any discussion on that?
I'll move it.
I'll second the motion by Raddick. Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed saying aye. Passes five to zero. Item B is similar to the next several items which we need to consider separately since they are separate drainage districts. Item B is approval resolution levying special assessment for the Orton Slough Drainage District and certified at the county auditor of Woodbury County, Iowa.
And there are changes from the information that was provided in the backup. A couple of errors were caught on the outstanding balances. So we've had to redo a couple of these to assure we had adequate money to cover expenses, drainage district dues, and any minor work that might need to be done in any of these districts. So I guess I can read through them as we go and let's see, Orton Slough's, okay, well, they're in the right order. First one's resolution for Orton Slough of $0 for 2024-2025.
I'll second the motion by Raddick. Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed saying aye. Passes five to zero. Item C is the same for Smoky Hollow Drainage District.
Also a zero levy for 2024-2025.
I'll second the motion by Raddick. Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed saying aye. Passes five to zero. Item D is the same for Weber Creek Drainage District.
And the same levy, zero for 2024-2025.
I'll second the motion by Raddick. Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed saying aye. Passes five to zero. Item E is the same for Wolf Creek Drainage District.
Wolf Creek, I just want to make a couple of comments on. You can see that there is a significant negative balance in, on the county auditor's balance for Wolf Creek. We're still waiting for our FEMA payments from the 2019 flood. We have submitted our expenses in that district now for three times, last time being in September. I've, September 2023, that is. I've contacted Iowa Homeland Security a couple of times and hope they get back to me soon on what the status of that repayment is. We, we're recommending $500 for Wolf Creek to cover their drainage district dues and a portion of the interest on the expense.
I'll second the motion by Raddick. Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed saying aye. Passes five to zero. Item F is the same for Bennett McDonald Drainage District.
Bennett McDonald, we're recommending $100, basically covering their drainage district dues. They have adequate balance to take care of any maintenance needs for this year.
I'll second the motion by Raddick. All, yes, Mr. Taylor.
You said $100?
$100, yes.
Okay. Was the backup $6,000 or is that a change?
That was based on, on an incorrect balance. So that was one of the ones that I had to change. And I'm sorry that wasn't there in the backup. I was out of the office last week, so I didn't get to double check everything.
Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed saying aye. Passes five to zero.
We always try to get these sets so that there's adequate time to levy them. Our drainage policy says we'll have these turned in to the auditor's office by, I think it's May 31st, so.
Item G is the same for Smithland Drainage District.
Smithland, we recommend zero levy for 24-25.
I'll second the motion by Raddick. Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed saying aye. Passes five to zero. Item H is the same for Wolf Creek Pumping District Number Two.
This was one of the ones that was changed, recommending a levy of $100 to cover drainage district dues for Wolf Creek Pumping Number Two.
I'll second the motion by Raddick. Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed saying aye. Passes five to zero. Item I is the same for Wolf Creek Pumping District Number Three.
And zero is recommended for Pumping District Number Three.
Second motion by Raddick. Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed saying aye. Passes five to zero. Item J is the same for Anthem Central Drainage District.
Anthem Central recommends zero for 24-25.
I'll second the motion by Raddick. Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed saying aye. Passes five to zero. Item K is the same for Maple River Drainage District.
This one was another change, recommending $100 be levied for Maple River Drainage District.
I'll second the motion by Raddick. Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed saying aye. Passes five to zero. Item L is the same for Poverty Hollow Drainage District.
This one is also recommended for $100. And that differs from the backup sheet, but again, it is necessary on the revised sheet to cover their drainage district dues.
I'll second the motion by Raddick. Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed saying aye. Passes five to zero. Item M is to award the quote for one new motor grader to Murphy Tractor.
Last week, we received bids for motor graders. Murphy Tractor was low. We had a very competitive bid on the Cat 150. This is one where I gave staff some choice when they come in within $2,000 of each other. Staff expressed their preference for the 772, which was also the low bid. I'm recommending award of the John Deere 772 G machine to Murphy Tractor.
Second the motion by Raddick. Any discussion? Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed saying aye. Passes five to zero.
I should have awards on the rest of the equipment for next week for the board. And next week, perhaps, I'd like to have a little discussion just to show you what our prices have gone up in the last four years. We're seeing almost 70% cost increase on the motor graders alone. It's, we were pushing half a million dollars this time on, on the cat machine. We're getting better trades, but it's still not making as big a dent as we would like. But thank you.
Thank you. Item eight from the county sheriff is an action item, approval of hiring three deputies in advance of known retirements.
Good evening, or good afternoon, I guess it would be. So we have a unique circumstance in that we have plenty of lead time on some retirements. Since I've been sheriff, we've had one deputy retire out, you know, after a long career and retire. So typically, we've hired many deputies in my three years, three and a half years as sheriff, but it typically happens as a result of somebody leaving abruptly or sometimes we'll get a two-week, maybe a three-week notice that somebody's leaving. In this particular case, we know that we have, we for sure have a captain that is going to retire no later than January 28th of 2025. A sergeant that's going to retire no later than sometime mid-March of 2025. And a lieutenant that's going to retire sometime June, July, or August. He hasn't had his meeting with ipers yet to know when that's going to be, but sometime in that early summer, early to mid-summertime range. We may also, there may be two other people leaving, but they're not certain yet. So, but I know for sure these three are leaving. They, and they're willing to give me a letter stating that, that they're, that they're done on those, those month timeframes. So I contacted Melissa because I've never had the opportunity to plan ahead and hire ahead. Because for us, deputies take about, if they have to go through the academy, it takes about eight or nine months to get them through the academy, through the field training, through the post-academy training, and for them to be able to count on our schedule and work the road by themselves is about eight, eight to nine-month process. So I contacted Melissa and asked her what her thoughts were on doing some preemptive hiring. The second part of this, and the reason to come to the board, is what I would like to do is with your authorization tonight to hire these three people to replace these guys when, when they retire. I would like to hire them, I believe I put down August 12th, so that we can send them to the academy sometime after August 12th, August 12th or after. But there's an academy that starts August 26th and ends December 13th, which means we could get them out of the academy and starting the FTO program by the time that first captain retires. And almost done by the time the sergeant retires. And then would be done by the time that third person retires. And what that means for us and for the citizens of Woodbury County is we won't be three people short on patrol during that timeframe. Because typically what happens, we get a two-week notice, then we hire somebody if we have a list, and then we're down, we're short for eight months. This would allow us to avoid that. The, the other part of it is, the hiring process right now in our area is super competitive. There are people that are applying for jobs in not just our agency, but other area law enforcement agencies. In this particular case, we happen to be about a month ahead of the curve for some of our competitive agencies. And two of the three people that are next on our civil service list that I would hire are, I know for sure they are on other lists. And if you guys approve this tonight, I'm going to walk across the street and I'm going to make them a conditional offer of employment to start in August, hoping that they would accept that conditional offer. And then that would get us very qualified candidates that we won't lose to other area agencies. And then also get us, so we're not short on patrol.
Just a question if I may.
Yep.
Do we pay for wages? Forgive my ignorance on this.
While they're at the academy, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so we will, and that's why I came to the board for approval. I mean, if, if it's, if it's were, if we know they're leaving and I wasn't going to hire until they left, then it would just be a matter of going through the consent agenda through Melissa. But knowing that we're, we're going to be paying guys to be here at the same time we're paying the guys who haven't retired yet. That's why I'm coming to the board with, with the approval. I estimate the cost is going to be about $112,000 in those wages. But I believe that the money that we would save by not being three deputies down, some of that will be offset in overtime, because when we're down, we just have to pay overtime to, to backfill the shifts. And, and then the other thing is, getting the quality candidates that I think we'll get, if you guys do approve this, you know, who knows what that may save in not getting quite as good of candidates. I just got to be careful what I say, but.
And I think you and I talked about this earlier. Were you able to receive any signed dates or documentation on their retirements?
They told me that I would, they would give me those if the board was so inclined to want those. I could get them in writing, but I talked to each one of the three individually and they gave me no later than January 28th for the captain. The, the sergeant was like mid-March and the lieutenant, he just hasn't met with ipers. So he couldn't, at this point, give me a definitive date, but he is for sure retiring in either June, July, or August.
Okay, as, as long as we have that, you know, on the record that there is a, it's planned.
These are guys that are all long in the tooth and they're ready to retire and they've got, they'll retire with their, you know, with their pension and have had long careers and they're retiring out. I, I just am glad that we know they've been very open with me and very transparent, which is giving me the opportunity to come to you folks and, and ask for this, if we can do this. Just for the, the transparency, I am not asking you guys to authorize three additional deputies. We're authorized for 43, including the sheriff. I'm not asking you to give me 46. Although for, for a few months, we will have 46 deputies, but once those three retire, we would be back to 43. The other, and this is a worst-case scenario. I, I don't want to be too specific with personnel matters in, in public, but one of these three may be leaving several months earlier. And then we may also have a deputy that might be going to a, a far outside agency in a completely different state. And so if, if those two things were to happen, that number would be significantly less. That 112,000 would be significantly less. And then to offset some of the costs, I think I mentioned in here how our revenue in, in civil is about, it's going to be about $50,000 over this year, this particular year that we're in now. We anticipate that it will be at least that or more than what we've anticipated for FY '25, so.
So is the funding source reserves or what are we talking?
I, my belief is we, it won't have to, we will not have to come back and ask for money. In, in my time as sheriff, we've averaged somewhere between $80,000 and $200,000 under budget each year. So I would anticipate, especially with, with the jail not being open and not having expenditures that are, that were anticipated to be going out, that are not going out, food and, and those types of things. I don't anticipate that we will need to ask for any money in FY '25, even with this in the budget. But I mean, I can't guarantee that, but I, that's what I anticipate. If it's been like it has been the last three years, I don't anticipate that we'll be anywhere near our budget, and that's because of the turnover in the jail.
And a typical year, you might have one gone or gone, going through training at a time? Is that typical?
It varies. We've had as many as three or four, but typically that we don't hire them until it's, their other person's already gone. We get a two-week notice and it takes us a couple of weeks to get their medical, physical, and their MMPI and get them scheduled in an, in an academy. So this has just been the first time that we've had this much notice that I could actually get some people hired ahead of time so that we're not short. It's also the first time that I, I, I know I'm trying to, it's like, it's like the WNBA draft or the NFL draft. At this point, I, I have like three first-round draft choices that I think I can get job offers to before they're off the board, so to speak.
Sure. Three or two?
Two of them are on the other list.
Okay.
But, but we're going to, we're looking at higher three. The other one was on the other list, but it already removed his name from the list.
Well, typically, we wouldn't want to, you know, have such an overlap, but because of the way your office runs and the training lag that there is with deputies, I think this makes sense if we can cover most of it with your budget already. Any other thoughts?
Yeah, I think when you look at the attorney's office and how far they're down, I mean, it's tough to hire any of these departments. And so I think we've got a great opportunity here with guys that know that they're going to be gone and we know how much time it takes to get them through the academy. I, I just, I think it's something we got to do.
I'd move the approval of hiring the three deputies in advance of the known retirements.
I'll second the motion by Taylor. Any other questions for the sheriff? Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed saying aye. Passes five to zero.
I really do thank you. Thank you.
Item nine from Board Administration, Finance Director Dennis Butler, is approval to transfer $1,250,000 from the general basic fund to debt service. This is something we have talked about for a long time and officially is going to be done tonight. Dennis?
This will take place as soon as we get it approved. I'll have it moved next week. That will cover our lease payment to the LEC, which in turn covers our debt payment principal and interest to the bondholders. This money is coming out of reserves. And when Matthew presents his part there, it is taken out of our reserves there, but we hope to recover this through settlements in the future and put it back into the reserves in general basic.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just to be clear, and I know we talked about this a little earlier, but Dennis, you had said that you're anticipating $265,000 a month for revenue for this next fiscal year.
Yes, that's what was presented by the sheriff and 3.2 million total over fiscal year 24, 23, 24, 25. Potentially it could be much more, but until we get going out there, we won't know, but.
So is this not, we're not needing to cover quite as much in this previous year? Did we predicate that on starting in September and then we haven't?
Yeah, for the, for the year coming up, we will not have to make a transfer like this. We already got plans without using any other.
Assuming the jail's open as of July 1st and we have inmates?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. July 1st, correct? We'd have to have a full month because we're anticipating.
That's anticipated opening, yes.
And is that, any update on that?
Nope.
So July 1st is the?
Well, early, I don't think they've said the first, yeah, early July. Excuse me, yeah, early July.
Okay. I appreciate it.
Any questions for Dennis? I'll second the motion by Raddick. Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed saying aye. Passes five to zero. Item 10 from the Board of Supervisors, myself, is an information item titled, "Good News Report." That Woodbury County's general basic reserve level of 24.6% is above the 20% level targeted by policy. There's been much talk about the use of county reserves for the FY '25 budget, and it would be helpful to communicate to the public where the reserve level is now that the process has concluded. The county began the FY '25 budget process with general basic reserves of 35.31%, which was a very high level compared to recent years, I think the highest in 15 or so years. Substantial use of reserves was therefore entirely warranted, in my opinion, and also meant the county did not seek those funds from property taxpayers. At the current moment, estimated general basic cash reserves after June 30th, well, after June 30th, are $9,013,690, which is 24.6% of expenses. Woodbury County's target set by policy is 20%, and the county's current level is much higher than several prior years following the budget process. I think we're higher than seven out of the 10, seven out of the last 10 budget years at this point. So Dennis Butler has attached a report, and I communicated that if he had any updates, he could share those with us tonight if anything was wrong or missing. They do list out different funds. General Basic has the 20, has the 24.6% level. General Supplemental, which is a little different because it does not have the same restrictions as General Basic and Rural Basic, which is the third fund that is listed. We've tracked mostly General Basic over the years because that is the, that's the one that we hold to the policy language. And again, it's nice to be at this point, in this position at this point, especially considering the challenges we faced this budget year and that we will have in the future to know that we're at least above 20%. So again, this is just a status update and we can discuss and see if we have any questions for Dennis. Mr. Taylor?
Thank you very much. So just to make sure, Dennis, you and I spoke earlier, but just for transparency's sake, this is just the general basic reserves. This does not include general supplemental, which is at 7.62%. And then it doesn't include rural basic, which is at 24.22. So I just calculated all those together at 19.9% in terms of how much we have as a spend and our reserve levels in comparison. But I understand for Dennis's purposes or tonight, we're just looking at the 35 million or so. I, I agree, it's good news. My only word of caution is a canary in the mine is the 265,000 a month that unless we have prisoners or inmates as of July 1st, every month, just to kind of put that on the radar. And then the 200,000 in the self-liability fund, those are just some concerns going forward. But hopefully, you all can maintain that reserve level as it is right now at, you know, 19.9 or 24.6, however you calculate that until, so. Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify something you said, Jeremy, that early July is the substantial completion date or anticipated substantial completion date when the prisoners will be out there. That'll be up to the sheriff's department and how soon some of the little stuff is done on the inside. But I just wanted the public to know that substantial completion date is not the same as inmates in the jail.
That's a good, good clarifier. So for that going forward, let's just say that when we are fully occupied, then you need to budget in about 265,000 from reserves every month. Would that be fair, Dennis? You said 266, 265?
Yes, and we are planning on recouping most of that money, if not all of it. But the caveat here, no, sheriff's still, no, he's not here. We did put in 3.2 million that goes into general basic fund. Now, when we talk about that, that's estimating maybe a lot lower. When we turn in a bill for whatever it is on lost revenue, we're going to be going at 150 rate because we have to go back September 1st. Where would we have been since July 1st to be collecting revenue? And we'd be collecting 150 prisoners, so we're going to be up to about 450,000 a month. Not 266, but we took a conservative, you know, estimate. But when it comes down to the vast tax, it'll be 150 a month.
So what have we budgeted per month on? Our budget is predicated as of July 1st that every month, how much would come in or we'll have to take it out of reserves? Is it 265 or 267?
We are going to be much higher than what we actually have budgeted because like I said, we got to go back September 1st. Going forward, what we would have had there now, if we would have been open September 1st or 14th, we'd have 150 prisoners, so really, in reality, it could be total to 450,000, which is almost 200,000 more a month, which will revert back to reserves.
Yeah.
So we're, we're covered pretty good here. And if they do open early, say we do have prisoners in there for 10 days, whatever, we'll take that revenue off of the 150 revenue that we would have lost or the different, whatever it is. So that's what the plan is.
And then last question, if that's okay? So if the LEC authority comes and asks, as I anticipate they will, for 100, 200,000, I don't know how much more. We don't have that budgeted currently?
No, because we don't have a budget for miscellaneous revenue. That's their funds over there based on interest off the bonds that, you know, we sold. And it is kind of our money too, but when they run short in that miscellaneous fund, it will have to come out of general basic funds and that could probably be a donation.
Thank you very much.
And that's going to be worked out. That's why we hired Jason Kaminsky to work with the two entities to figure this out when the time comes. But we have no idea because they definitely are going to run out of money in that fund.
Okay, thank you.
County's responsible or is a funding mechanism, whether we like it or not.
So I was going to comment too that, you know, some of that was by design, that we built up the reserves to where we're at because in 2020 and the, the jail actual bids came in way above the estimate. You know, we had a $14 million gap and we did not anticipate that we were going to get ARPA funds or some kind of outside funds. So we were, you know, pretty, pretty tight on the budget in those. So we were, you know, pretty, pretty tight on the budget in those years there. And then we ended up getting, you know, ARPA funds that we could use ten million without any strings attached, and some for the HVAC improvements. And that was able to basically enable us to use these reserves to kind of tie over some of this lost revenue and tie over some of these tough situations we've been in. So, yeah, it's a nice, good news report, but at the same time, it was also planned for, we, you know, anticipated bigger expenses. And so, I mean, twenty percent's probably a target to stick to moving forward, or twenty-five. You know, I don't know what you guys set the number at, I won't be here, but, you know, I think it's good that we got here and we stuck to it.
Just to circle back on the different fund types. So I believe from talking to Dennis that General Supplemental is fairly in line with historic levels for General Supplemental.
Correct.
Reserves. Reason why we don't typically track that as carefully as General Basic can cover that. And if we had a situation where we needed, where General Supplemental was a need, we would be raising taxes on that levy, which is something we've never done.
Correct.
Before. So having a extra padding over twenty percent is kind of, is kind of the idea. We don't want to, we want to have as much over twenty percent as we can for needs like that. And I will say that this is always a moving target. There's at least, I think, three points where it makes sense to do a status update on the reserve levels, which is, one, after we completed the budget. Two, after we complete the budget amendment for the year. And three, after the fiscal year is over. The second one with the budget amendment is going to likely reduce reserves because that's typically what happens. And from talks with Dennis over the last week, that should not make our general basic fund dip below twenty percent?
Absolutely not.
Okay. And the third point is the end of the fiscal year, which is when it's typically a net positive for reserves because unspent funds from different departments do revert to general fund reserves. And so there's probably more points, but I know those are at least three that make sense, and we don't always give updates. But whenever we ask, it's in that moment. So this is a logical point to kind of bookmark where we are and to say we've completed the budget, we're above our reserve level for General Basic, and that's a good thing to communicate. Mr. Turner, did you have something?
Go ahead, Turner, twenty-seven thirty-eight, two hundred Street, Moleville. I just want to say thank you for this clarity, and I think this really helps in our case with the people that Dennis is referring to that have really harmed this county. And these types of discussions just not only help the public, but it helps our case that we have truly been harmed and that, that we are doing everything in our power to mitigate damages and be responsible with what we hope is somebody else's money, not just ours. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments on this? Appreciate the highlighting from Mr. Radig. This was also planned, and it would have been better news, but fortunately, the level of good news sort of outweighed, at this point, the level of bad news we've received. So we hope that continues. Every year is always the hardest, last several years. All right, moving on to item eleven, reports on committee meetings. Anyone?
Just echo what you said earlier to the consent agenda, that the new emergency services director, Drew Byer, will start next week. And we're really excited about that. Thanks for your press release, thanks for the journal. I'm sure some of the other media will pick it up yet tonight too, but it was a lot of work getting to that point. And I know that I've received a lot of great compliments from a lot of our volunteer EMTs on different squads, firefighters on different squads, that they're very excited for him to be in charge down there. And I think the staff down there is excited for him to take over, so we're looking forward to that. Along those same lines with emergency services, I gave you a report last week that the tuck pointing was going to start in July. We found out this week that the brick manufacturer that they used, that for some of the bricks that they're going to have to put in the building, is not actually operating until sometime December, in September. I'm not sure if it's a supply issue or what, but so that tuck pointing project is going to be pushed into fall until they can't do it until they have bricks. So I just wanted to let you guys know that. But Kenny is, I got Kenny in touch with Craig, and so they've been talking, and it's all, all good. But I don't know if it's another COVID-related issue or what, but no bricks, I guess, so that's all.
Only one I have is just Soulan District Health. Nothing new other than rabies is on the rise in the state of Iowa. Anyhow, yeah, don't, be careful, Dennis, we got your back. But anyhow, just if you have questions, if you think an animal has rabies, just call Soulan District Health and they can walk you through the process. But they just said be mindful of that, especially of bats, so, which is fairly common knowledge. But that was the big takeaway from this. Everything else was going fine there, but just rabies is on the rise. That's all I have to report for committees.
All right. Item twelve, any citizen concerns?
I sent you all emails with a Bremmer County resolution. I just wanted to say that resolution deals with eminent domain with carbon CO2 pipelines. And I want you to know that that was attorney-prepared, and I believe, I don't have this from the actual source, but I believe it was also reviewed by your attorney, Timothy Whipple. So I think that's something that would be a good source of information for you guys. Maybe you want to use it in the future. I also, is my understanding that they intend on taking that next week to Bremmer County to be passed. And they are looking to also do a resolution, or not a resolution, a, an ordinance, essentially saying that they are ignoring IUB's authority to do eminent domain for these CO2 pipelines. So it'll be interesting to see how that goes through. And if you have any questions, feel free to call me and I'll get whatever information I can for you. Do you have a question? All right, thank you.
Thank you. I'll be watching the news for Bremmer County then, next week.
Yes.
And potentially reach out to our attorney and see if it's something the board would like to consider. Any other citizen concerns? All right, item thirteen, any board concerns? Mr. Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just kind of a compliment and a question rolled into one. So the compliment is Mark Nara in terms of working with the grant application and interchange. I mean, that's something that this board has been working on for a very long time. I think it's going to have a very good synergistic impact on economic development. I think it was high-quality work. So thank you for that. And with that as well, looking for the next county engineer, is there desire to rescind his resignation? Is there a plan to open up that process? Where are we at in terms of all of that? And sorry if I've been out of the saddle for a little time on duty, but are we reopening and is that?
Yeah, we've reopened the job opening, and I guess Mark hasn't quite given us an exact date of when he wants to depart. He's having so much fun. I talked to him last week, and he's like, I'm good for another three years, I think, so. No, I'm just teasing, he didn't say that, but.
Twenty twenty-eight.
We'll put him down for that part, he'll be good, no. But yeah, we did repost, and we'll see who we can get to apply, so that's all we can do.
And I believe you were aware of that. I believe we, HR did send a update to the board.
I may have missed it, so if I did, that's completely on me, so.
I did have a question related to Mark. Have you got an update on Highway twenty? I know that they still have the detour on my way here. I don't know if you, yeah, I don't know if you'd heard anyone from the DOT, what they're anticipating out there after that fire today.
Yeah, it was scheduled to reopen at three fifteen.
Okay.
So it should be open by now. I don't have verification though.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any other board concerns?
Yeah, I did, the landfill issue. I did, I went out and talked on-site at the convenience center. They said that residence was small, and I don't know how they define small, but small loads of construction, like it gets some drywall, two-by-fours, you know, you're remodeling your bathroom, kitchen, what, you know, that stuff can be brought out there. But anything that's, they said, commercial load size, I don't know if they mean like, you know, one of those big massive dump trailers that has to go out to the Jackson landfill. But they say citizens can still bring to the one, you know, out there off of seventy-five. So they said that's, they said that's fine, so. But I'm still going to look into that, just to verify, just to verify. But anyhow, so that's where, so technically, if anybody asks, yeah, they can. Just they said small construction loads of normal construction remodel debris. So that's all I have.
Anything? All right, thank you, we are adjourned.